Okay. Good morning. This is the regular April 16th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's eight thirty in the morning. And in front of you, you have this morning's agenda. I do have one item that I would love to get your approval to add. It would be the Morse Court Parking Lot Area Survey. Tiger will review that if we could just add that to the end of the agenda. That would be or after, I guess we probably should do it whenever. Let's see, where is Tiger? How about after twenty seven, after the White Birch Road repair?
Sure.
So I'll just.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay, Morse Court. Okay, thank you. So all in favor of the amended agenda? Steve, I mean, it's unanimous. Okay. And if I could get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held on April second, two thousand and twenty four?
So moved.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. Do we have anyone wishing to comment?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Moving on to Police Department Purchase Order with Chief De Federico. Oh, or Joe. Good morning. Sure, can you put your? No, that's okay.
We need to increase blanket purchase order. We have open for New England uniform where we get all of our uniforms and equipment from. We're requesting eight thousand dollars be added to purchase order two, four, zero, three, seven, eight. The money is available in the account to cover the increase. And this is related to new officers and purchases for additional equipment and things of that nature for that initiative.
So it's more than just uniforms?
They do uniforms, boots, things of that nature, patches, name tags, all things related to that. We order a lot of gear through them, the belts and the holders for the equipment, things like that.
Any questions?
We had a similar item on our agenda a couple of weeks ago, right? Where we approved.
For the new.
The new officers, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't working. I'm making magic think. Yeah, you must. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine with this.
You're okay?
Just quickly, how many officers? What is the cost to uniform and outfit an officer? Just generally.
I have it written down. I haven't looked at it. I can get it for you for sure today.
I'm just curious.
When we were putting everything together to move forward, I have those numbers just on in front of me. But it 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 becomes expensive when you're talking all of the uniform, initial issue, uniforms, gear, firearm, weapon, all that stuff. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve a request to increase a previously approved purchase order for New England uniform in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't you can leave it on. Moving on to the food pantry. Bethany.
Good morning. All right, so my request is for Human Services Department for the approval of May and June two thousand and twenty four rent payment for the food pantry space located at Saint Mark's Episcopal Church. The monthly rent is one thousand dollars, so two separate checks would. I'm requesting separately during each remaining month for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four. This is money that is taken out of donations. The food pantry is run completely on donations, but just wanted to make the request. The reason we do have it at Saint Mark's is there's ample parking. They maintain the space for us twenty four seven. It's ADA compliant, finding an area, you know, one of the town buildings. It the town has looked at that through the years, but it's always felt that given the confidentiality and the space for parking and the access to it with pastoral care available, that it is definitely, the history of the town has wanted to have it at Saint Mark's. So this is why we do do the the rent during COVID. It was decreased. We decreased the rent, came to an agreement, and they have not raised it since.
So just so I understand, so this this lease payment does not run through our general fund. It is a donation from the community that helps pay the twelve thousand annual rent.
It is twelve, exactly.
Okay.
So the whole food pantry, any any expenses, costs that are incurred are completely donated through the town kindness of the community.
So this money would go toward cleaning or, you know, the upkeep of the area?
So we do, because of the Health Department, we have to make sure that we keep up with the the safety of the food and the cleanliness. We do have to have it cleaned once a month. We used to have it cleaned twice a month, but we've cut it back to once a month. And really, that's the cost.
Ken, was there? We had the previous lease payment in here from twenty two running through December of two thousand and twenty three. Was there a lapse in?
No, so with the lease agreement, there was not a lapse in paragraph five of the lease. It is the lease shall continue for subsequent twelve month terms unless terminated or amended by both parties. So is even though it just took time to get the new contract back. So this is why.
And it's the exact same contract because I saw the old one and the new one.
Yeah, I got both here if anyone wants.
Great.
Okay.
Beth, just, I mean, we should take a moment and recognize what a great thing this is for the community. I mean, it's really amazing, A, the amount of work that goes into it and B, the access that folks that in need have. And this is something that we do as a community as well as anybody, so.
Yeah, no, it's great, and the community is so so involved in it. I, yeah, it it's money donations go right exactly directly to it. And then we have our volunteers that are there and and the churches and the food drives locally with with the schools and the clubs and individuals is just definitely.
So the word's out there. I mean, you do need more or?
No, we we I hate to say, no, we don't need anything, but at this point, we're functioning. It's it's a fine oiled machine. And if we do need something during COVID, we did have to reach out and it was just, yeah, the kindness was there. I'm just trying to think if there's anything else. No, it's it's just unbelievable part of the town. It has doubled. The number of people utilizing it has doubled. At the same time, we've been able to continue giving the same amount of food, even though it's doubled because the community has responded as well.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So if I could get the approval of a request from Human Services Department to authorize rent payments to Saint Mark's Church in the amount of two thousand dollars. The payments are from May and June two thousand and twenty four rent at one thousand dollars per month.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, number three. I was like, wait, I'm like, oh, wait.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Next item is the lease agreement. Approval of a request from the Director of Human Resource. Sorry, why don't you just talk about the lease?
Right.
I'm reading the.
So this is the request for the lease agreement to be signed. Yes, there was a lapse from the last signed one, but it was, the contract was was in effect.
A little ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, there we go. So they're requesting another twelve months, one thousand dollars a month to remain as as the rent and requesting for that to go through as for the next fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to New Canaan Garden Club Market. John, thank you. See you. Wendy, thank you.
Good morning. I'm here with Wendy Dewey, President of the Garden Club or Co-President, I guess.
Co-President.
Yes. They've gone through the Park and Rec Commission to receive approval to have a plant sale in front of the Carriage Barn Arts Center.
On May fourth from nine to two. We're calling it our reimagined market because we're having all of our members bring in their old pots and baskets and stuff, and we're filling them with plants and flowers. The money will go to our civic and general budget because right now we do things like court therapy and a lot of members are are paying out of their pocket to get the flowers and a lot of it is donated. But it would be nice to have more funding for that so we could do more for the town. You know, we work for the in the Historical Society Herb Garden. We're overhauling that. Irwin Park, we help take care of that as well as the well garden at Waveney. So we were hoping to do this biannually, actually, just to, you know, so that we have money to keep doing the things that we do.
And it's outside? You're doing it in front of the carriage barn or inside?
Right in front of it, and we have a small tent to put over the table. So, yeah, it's just one morning, and we're hoping that all the people at the soccer games will stop by. It's the weekend before Mother's Day, so everybody will come.
Powerhouse doesn't have a show till that evening, so it fits in perfect, so.
That's great. Just and just so, I mean, I'm sure you both know, but any to do any sales at Waveney, we have to approve it, so.
It's good, good policy.
It is a good policy, so.
It's on the calendar. I put it on the calendar.
Yeah, it's a great event. Sounds like a great event. So do I have a motion to approve?
Second. Thanks.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next one. Okay, lacrosse jamboree.
I'm still in here, so Jennifer Joyce should be online. Okay, she's away, but I'm I'm here with Chip Buzzio. Yeah, it's break week. Yes, exactly. So this is for the Cochran Classic, which has been going on for as long as I've been working for the town. Two day event, boys and girls. And they, I'm gonna let Chip discuss it further or, yep, she is online, so.
Jen's up first.
Okay, I'm here for support.
Good.
Hi, Jen. You said you're up first.
You need to unmute.
Unmute. Can you unmute?
I'm so sorry. When you're like not in your home face, everything's a little off. Good morning. Thanks for having us. We wanted to just request permission to be able to host our event and be able to sell our annual Cochran Classic t-shirts and have food vendors for the families visiting from other towns. This event, I don't, this this event has always sort of been the a huge part of the lacrosse culture and really community culture. It starts, it's for boys, second, third, and fourth grade, and girls, four, five. I'm sorry, five, six, excuse me. And it's people come from all different towns, and then they spend the day in New Canaan. Like, it's really lovely and things have shifted a bit, and we've had to push all of our vendors into Water Tower Three in which they don't make a lot of money and they're local vendors. They're local families that we've used Gopher Ice Cream. There's a family who has the Taco and Tequila Truck. And when you shove them back there, it's hard, people don't know that they're back there, so they don't go. And then it's just tricky. So we're sort of requesting to have it back in the old place where we used to have it between Dunning and the Water Tower. Chip, I don't know if you and the money that we raise helps to pay our coaches. It's really sort of the lifeblood of the organization. And if we can't hold these organizations, we, I'm sorry, if we can't hold these events, we have trouble keeping everything afloat.
Just just a quick question. Is tequila gonna be served or we just doing tacos?
I mean, I'm open, you know.
I'm glad she answered.
We could do, we can do like frozen margaritas. Sometimes it's hot, you know, whatever. We are completely amenable to.
You do want us to approve this?
Yeah, no, there is definitely no alcohol served. The Waffle Cabin also wanted, like, it's it's local businesses and as well. There's local vendors too, like eighty four sports and Chalk Talk Sports. They're all New Canaan based businesses that we try to support, and they support us. And it's really a fun day. I mean, people from Westport and all other towns love to come, and we have such beautiful facilities that it's it's nice to be able to use them and.
That's a great, it's a great event, and everybody enjoys, that's participated in it over the years, enjoys it. My only question is, why did we have to move the trucks to begin with? Is there, was there a reason why we had to move them back or was that just a?
You know, Chip, do you, are you able to?
I think it was with the new Tiger Lane entrance and exit. We we stopped traffic between the two fields. I actually think that's a good thing because there's so many little kids, especially when you're talking about second, third, and fourth graders. I actually think blocking that road, which we've done enough, which we did, and having no access in or out via cars is a safety situation that I think is better for the event. So I think that is one of the reasons we should move it back to that that area. Aside from making the vendors a better situation. I also think having the event is something that is, we keep New Canaan families here. And that's something that adds an economic value to the town whenever we do those events because our own families are staying here and spending money here and waking up in their homes and and not going to another town, so.
I agree completely. Having done way too much travel sports.
Yeah.
If you don't have to travel, it is a found weekend. It's beautiful.
Yes, so it it is beneficial to have it in that area and block that that access. You know, so.
I just have a couple of questions. One, I just, only because I'm not familiar and sorry to anybody in the community, I don't, I'm not familiar with BFF Burgers.
I don't know BFF Burgers.
Jen, yeah, Jen.
They're.
Anytime.
I'm sorry. He was based out of Norwalk, but recommended by a New Canaan family just because there's not a local food truck, like the gentleman who runs the Apple Cart typically can't provide that kind of mobile service. We went to him first. We also spoke to the gentleman who has the contract at Dunning. And due to the volume of people that they would be serving, you really need a particular kind of setup. And it's hard to do that mobily, so there is a burger truck and he is based out of Norwalk. And he's come to our, gosh, since I've been doing it for five years. I've worked with Aaron and he's wonderful and, yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to hire someone from New Canaan, but there is, there really isn't.
I guess the question I, and and because this is become a, you know, I think it's a good thing for the various organizations in town to be able to raise money for their, you know, their programs. We just have to be sensitive to local businesses that provide those same services. So I would just ask, and, you know, I'm not gonna make a big deal out of it tonight, today, but, you know, and I don't know if it has to be a food truck, but, you know, we do have a burger place in town. You know, I would, I would hope and and I would ask in the future, it'll, if it comes back again, if it was, if you approached those local providers of goods and services that you want to provide, so like our.
They've all been, they've all been approached. I know that Bobby Rushton has approached almost all of our local food vendors. Chip, was that two years ago?
It was right out of COVID. We did a summer event and Bobby was the Executive Director of the Athletic.
They're always given the first look, always. For any of our events, we ask them first. It's just a matter of being able to do it.
Yeah.
They're always given, we would always much rather have them than anyone.
And we also usually send an email regarding all the availability of delis and restaurants and vendors in town to the families coming to our event, saying, hey, here are the local coffee shops, here are the delis and whatnot. If you if you want to go off our campus before, after the event, please do so and enjoy our town, so. And we've worked with the town before, what's that?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, and and it's been beneficial. But I remember Bobby created that list and we do share that list.
Okay, great. And then the other question I have is, when you're selling items, does the Lacrosse Association get a percentage of sales from that day?
We don't, I don't, we do not get a percentage of the sales from the food. We do get a sales from the t-shirt. So we buy the t-shirt at a very low cost, around eleven or twelve dollars, and we sell it for twenty. So we get an eight dollar margin.
Okay.
So we do, we do collect that that profit. We also do charge families, not families, charge programs to attend. A charge pays for the referees, pays for extra Porter Johns because we we need to increase the bathroom availability.
And the hand washing stations as well, so we're compliant with the Board of Health.
Yeah, hand washing stations. We pay for police officers to be on site. We have a ton of volunteers to help with parking and whatnot. John's team thankfully provides the garbage and the dumpster pickup. So there are a number of costs that go into the event. We don't make a large amount of money on on this event because our our cost to, our fee to come to the event is not very big. But any money that is left over goes back into the program and is used to purchase anything from balls to nets, to goals, to adding to our coaches' stipends. Costs are are rising a ton, and we have been able to keep our costs for youth lacrosse down, which is, which is something that we want to do as a non-for-profit. But it, you know, everywhere, costs are rising, so this does bring in some profit, but it's not a very big number at all.
So I guess that that's probably the conversation we probably should have going forward because I think allowing food and and the t-shirts is great because, I mean, I, this is the only community I've ever been to where you can't sell things at big sporting events. So, you know, when I had my kids in sports, I was like, oh, wow, we don't do that here. So I I'm fully in favor of it. I, but I do, I am sensitive to the money that people are spending coming back into our programs. So I would ask you to look at in the future, you know, if you're bringing outside vendors in to provide food, you know, like when you go to an arts and crafts festival, they pay either, you know, they pay to either be able to sell or they they get a percentage of proceeds of sales when you run an event where they are the, they kind of have the market for that day. It would help your program and it also would help say, okay, we're bringing in outside people, but the money is going into the program. So.
Yes, and I believe the Athletic Foundation did do that when we did host events in the summer.
Okay.
It's just something that as a youth organization in the spring, I don't believe we've ever done. But you are correct, there should be a percentage of sales that goes back to the program or to the town because they're using your land.
Or or like the farmer's market, where you pay.
Exactly.
It's a little something.
Yeah, not, I'm not, I'm not asking for a lot because you want to keep it reasonable for the people that are attending. But we are opening up our facilities to, you know, non-taxpaying resident, you know, I mean, I'm not, Waffle Cabin, I don't know if it's headquartered in New Canaan. I know it's a New Canaan family, but I don't know if the taxes go to New Canaan or not. Yeah. Oh, it's, okay, so so we're not getting tax revenue from those those vendors. And if we're not getting anything back into our programming, I just would like to see you negotiate that going forward so that it comes back to the town.
It makes total sense. The only thing I want to make sure we keep an eye on is the pass through. Does the vendor then increase their cost? Which makes a hot dog instead of being two dollars, five dollars, and and that's something that we want to prevent. So I I think we will do that study this year and talk to the vendors because you're one hundred percent right. It should be, the the question should at least be asked.
And as far as the layout goes, talking about the taxpayers, obviously, the track is there, the tennis courts are there. How, if if I want to go up and play tennis or run on the track during that time, are we, everybody's free to get up in, you know, and share, it's a shared space still, right? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, thankfully, the ample amount of parking between Waveney Park, Water Tower Three, Lapland Center. The the high school parking lot is very large, and so it's the south school parking lot that's there. If needed, we could always, you know, for cost, move the buses. And I know for like big games, we have moved the buses back to incorporate that back parking lot, and that's something that we could consider and pay for because I know there is a cost to move buses. But that's something that I, you know, we've had multiple events, not only this event before, but other stuff going on. Thankfully, we have probably the best parking of all Fair Fair County schools.
Good, that's great.
Yeah, you'd still be able to play tennis and softball will still be going on at the same time.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so then I can get a motion to approve permission from the New Canaan, for New Canaan Lacrosse Association to allow vendors selling apparel and food at the Lacrosse Jamboree, May eighteenth and nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, in Waveney Park at the Water Tower Field.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Hey, Chip, before you go, just to, again, thank you for all you do for New Canaan Lacrosse. The coaching at the varsity level and the the teams you put on the field are really amazing. Town is very, very thankful for, over the years, what the work you've put into that program, it's unbelievable.
No, I couldn't do it without the help of a lot of volunteers, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jen. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, moving on. John, you're busy today. Banco Pool, Steve Banco Pool.
Yes, this is, this is for the rent of our CO team, CO two tanks, which we use CO two. Most people use it for carbonated beverages, that type of stuff, but we use it for adjusting the pH of the pool. So since since we'd be going over ten thousand dollars, that's why we're back. So we need an increase in our PO. There is money available in the account.
Okay, any questions?
No, that would be great. Keep that pH where we need it.
That's right.
Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Rec Department and to increase a previously approved purchase order in the amount of two thousand six hundred twenty five dollars for CO two tank rental at the Steve Banco Pool.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana, could you all vote on the lacrosse jamboree?
We did.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It was yes.
It was Steve. I was second and Diana, third.
Okay, moving on. Waveney House Carpets.
Waveney House Carpets. So the the first, we want to purchase some new carpets for Waveney House. There's two sections we want carpet. We want to replace the ones in the hall with lighter colored carpet. The upstairs hall. There's two separate carpets there. And we also want to add some to the ladies' bathroom, the new ladies' bathroom. So the hallway, the two carpets are there, were bought in nineteen eighty nine. And unfortunately, they're still in pretty good shape. They need some binding and stuff like that, but they don't meet ADA requirements. They're too thick. The carpet doesn't, even if we replace the pad underneath, it's still too high, so.
Too plush.
Too plush. So we looked at shaving the carpet down and, yes, a whole big process. And it actually is the same amount of money for a thirty five year old carpet to do all that work as to replace them with new carpets that do meet the ADA requirements. So we 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 still think the hallway needs the carpets. It helps with the sound and everything else, but we'd like to replace the two, the two carpets in the hall. The the ladies' room, it, it's been built right off the hall. The new ladies' room, yes. In there, it's a very noisy room because it has all plaster and hardwood floors. So we'd like to have two carpets, one in the entryway and one in the main room, just to help break up the sound a little bit and improve that there, so.
What about the men's room? Is that loud too?
The men's room, no, because it doesn't have a seating area.
Yeah.
It's, it's, so, yes, it's loud, but there's not gonna ever be people hanging out in the men's room, so to speak. Doing, probably not doing their makeup and things like that, so.
So who picks out the carpet?
Well, we, we had a lot of people look at it. I think somebody at the back, it's helped a lot. Anna Kralikowski has helped a lot with picking out the carpets and the and the carpet company for this. But we've also had other people come look at the carpets. We had samples there. Instead of the dark colored carpet, we're gonna go with a lighter color to lighten up the hall some. Still is stain resistant and will hold up well, so hoping we'll get another thirty five years out of the new carpet.
Are these wool, wool carpets or are they wool or are they?
No, because Steph holds up.
I'm looking at John going.
She's still here?
We're gonna take about six months.
And and just in terms of, because they're high traffic, I mean, right?
They are very, very durable. He will take, you know, so if it happens, he will cover it, clean them for us for free. So he's a wholesaler here in.
Good.
He stands behind his products.
The carpets that are there, I know we paid a lot of money years and years ago. The carpets that are there, they're not worth anything, right? I mean, is there any kind of recycling or repurposing? I mean, we had the swap shop. Well, we had the swap shop.
Yeah, they always could be cut down someplace else. We run into the problem of meeting the ADA requirements. That would be the biggest issue for us. They're not gonna go into a dumpster by any means, but what we, what we would do with them, I don't know. what we what we would do with them, I don't know right now. So what we probably end up doing is rolling them up and putting them up.
Facebook Marketplace?
I don't know if we can do that.
Don't roll them up and put them in a basement.
Not in a basement, that's for sure.
We just don't, I mean, we always keep stuff, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Somebody in the community might use them. So even if we got them
Okay.
to the swap shop or somewhere.
Any, any, any repurpose? We don't need money. We just need them repurposed and not stored.
Okay, we we definitely can work on that. We do have about six months before the new ones come in.
Because they're not, how wide are they, John? They're that's.
Probably about six, seven feet.
Yeah, so like, you know, I don't know if they can make them into area rugs or something. It's fine.
They could be cut down to made into smaller rugs because they're twenty-seven feet long.
I don't think we should be cutting them down and spending the money.
This guy can do that. Of course, they have to be clean, number one. They have to be cleaned in.
Right.
Yeah.
Swap shop.
Right, so we can actually, this guy can actually do this here at this place in Wilton, where he can cut them down at, you know, at a place where there's not a design.
Yeah.
And then just surge it. That serves the ends of them all the way around, so.
We don't want to pay for that, though.
Okay.
We don't want to pay for that.
I I can shake them down.
Yeah, okay. Nice, but we're not paying for an old rug to be researched.
Unless we have a reason to put it somewhere in our own.
Which we can't, which we can't because they're
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Great.
All right. Okay, so if, any other questions? If not, if I could get a a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Rec Department to purchase two replacement carpets and two additional rugs for Wavine House second floor corridor and ladies' room from Palace Oriental Rugs. The two corridor rugs total cost is ten thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and the two ladies' rooms rugs cost three thousand six hundred eighty dollars.
Can can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, so this was not a planned expense or was it? Because I mean.
We we had the the money in the capital budget for replacement carpets. We were looking at replacing the two in the hall.
All right.
The ones in the bathroom were not a planned expense from that money.
But we got it. There's enough money to do.
There's enough money to do.
We got the magician to get a good deal.
That's helped a lot.
All right. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay, so I read the motion, so um.
And I will.
Okay, Amy.
I'll say.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Last one.
All right, uh, recreation purchase orders.
Okay, this is um to increase some purchase orders. The money is available. Um, this is for our before and after school programs, and I'm here with Zach. Um, and I'll let him take it from there.
Yeah, so pretty much with these programs, um, our goal is obviously to always bring new programs to the kids over at the elementary schools, and we always take waitlist as well. So if we have the ability to be able to let these kids in and we let them come in, which is why we need the increase here. Um, the money is there, which is great, but it's pretty much why we're asking for a little bit more. We were able to up um supply more children with the program, which is good.
And it's all in the self-sustaining fund.
That is correct.
Pass through.
Money in, money out.
Yep.
Exactly.
It's great that you're serving more kids. It's great.
Um, any other questions?
No.
Okay, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Rec Department to increase the following previously approved purchase orders as part of the before and after school programs by the amounts below. Food Explorers, one thousand seven hundred dollars, Elm Street Events, twelve thousand five hundred forty dollars, and Savvy Juniors, five thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Parking Commission Recommendations.
Morning, Stace.
Good morning. So at the Parking Commission meeting held on April third, the Parking Commission made some recommendations in regards to the premium business permits that are coming up for expiration on June thirtieth of this year. Their first recommendation was to raise the fee of the premium business permits twenty-five percent, which would being bring the base rate from four thirty-eight to five forty-seven fifty. Uh, the reason being is at the beginning of this fiscal year, we raised the hourly rate in our parking lots um from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five. So they felt that uh the twenty-five percent increase for shoppers and visitors to pay should also go to the premium business permit holders who are also parking in those lots, Morse Court, Park Street, and the Park Street Lot.
Can you, I I'm not really familiar how the premium business permit works. So is this for a business owner?
Yes.
And this is for an annual?
Correct.
And then they can park in those three?
In the lots that they're assigned. So the premium.
You're assigned to specific lot?
Correct.
Okay.
So the premium business lots are both in the Morse Court Lot and the Park Street Lot. We have thirty-six business premium permits in Morse Court. And we have sixteen Park Street that are um in Park Street itself and then along the stone wall, which is really associated to the tenants at one seventy-five Elm Street, we have twenty. Okay, so a total in Park Street really of about eighty permits and thirty-six again in Morse Court. So um, anyone who has a permit in either of those lots, that's their assigned lot.
And they do have, there is the ability to have free parking for business.
Correct.
So if they don't want the
To pay.
To pay.
To pay, that would be.
There is free parking available.
Correct, and that would be in Central Lot, Locust Lot, and the Richmond Hill Lot.
Right.
So there is free parking to um any employee with businesses in the town. Though we had a request years ago for premium spaces uh that were closer to these businesses. So that's how we wound up with the spots in these two lots.
Yeah, so it's a completely optional if someone chooses to take on this.
Correct, correct.
Did we increase the number of premium spaces in Morse Court during COVID or around that time?
It was actually pre-COVID, yeah, and.
It surprised me to see the number of spots in Morse Court that were dedicated to this based on how many spaces are available. And, you know, obviously, everybody talks about how hard it is, find us a place to park, so.
Yeah, yes. So that would be their their next recommendation. And at the time we increased it, again, um it started out as a small number in both lots, okay? And then the demand grew a little bit higher. And we felt at the time that these people that got the permits, these businesses were utilizing the lot anyway. They weren't going to the free business permits, the further away lots. So they were parking in the lot anyway, so it was felt at the time. Well, if the demand is there, they're still utilizing the spaces anyway, let's offer them permits. But it has stopped and we will not increase it. Moving forward with Morse Court, um, they are going to be striping, restriping Morse Court. And the best scenario would be a loss of eleven spaces. Um, and that looks like this is the best we can do. And I think that even though people are not happy with the loss of spaces, I think people are going to be very happy with the increase in the size of the spaces. Because we hear complaints about how small the spaces are and people getting dinged and things like that. So um, it is a good direction to go in, uh, the increase in spaces. But with the loss of spaces, the Parking Commission felt that the thirty-six premium business permits were too many for that lot. So the second recommendation that they are making would be to put a cap on the amount of permits that each business could have, okay? And they capped it at three. Following what the history was at the telephone lot, when we had the telephone lot, which was another premium business permit lot, they capped the number of spaces per business to three. So they went back to this, and this is only for the Morse Court Lot, because we're not losing any spaces anyplace else. It affects two businesses. Um, one business would lose nine spaces, nine permits, and another business would lose five. Everybody else is just fine. That has the permits in there. And they also recommended not to move down on the waitlist. So when we lose those permits, we will not refill those permits with anybody else on the waitlist. So basically, if you take those numbers, it would be a wash. We would be gaining those eleven spaces from doing away with those business permits.
So Stacy, do we have, um, you know, you said there's an alternate location on Park Street for some premium business? Do we have the ability to expand those premium business spots?
Um, along the stone wall, no. Again, they're specifically for the one seventy-five Elm Street tenants.
Okay.
Uh, I wouldn't recommend putting any more business permits into the main portion of the lot. That has sixty. We've so far been able to manage that amount with our shoppers and visitors, but increasing that I don't, I wouldn't recommend. So again, these these eleven people could go to Locust, Center, Richmond Hill. Um, and they can pay on a daily basis if they wanted to utilize the lot, but um.
But it's back to the numbers again. So total number of spaces for premium business currently at Morse Court is thirty-six. Out of that, there's a tenant currently that has twelve, if I understand that right, because you said they lose nine, right? So
Wow.
so out of thirty, that's, you know, that's.
That's a lot of spaces.
Yeah, and at the time, again, it was, it was demand and they were the ones that were willing to pay for them.
Right.
You know, uh, when we increased it, they were the ones that wanted it at the time. And then again, we had people going on the waitlist after.
So do you currently have a waitlist for the premium spaces at Morse Court too?
Yeah. None for Park Street, none for Park Street, but nine for Morse Court. Now, I'm not going to say that all nine will want them. This is an old waitlist. We haven't been able to move on it.
Well, and with the price increase, you may see, it, will you, so let me ask you this. If with this price increase, you see a drop-off for some businesses that say, you know, I don't really want to spend the extra money.
I mean, the businesses that are not over their cap?
Businesses that are currently there. So you said there's nine spaces. So you have a business that currently has nine additional spaces that they do not be allowed to
Renew, right.
If in the aggregate of all the other businesses that are currently having premium business spaces in Morse Court.
Mm-hmm.
If businesses drop off because of the price increase.
Yes, okay.
Will you open those spaces up to the nine?
The nine that?
Yes.
I guess that would be something I would have to just double check with the Parking Commission if they want, would be willing to do that. Their recommendation was not to move down on the waitlist, but maybe move those nine over to the other businesses that might not want to renew would be an option.
It is a significant, I mean, it's a significant price increase, and for some business owners, it may be
It may be too much, right, right.
So and and I'm sensitive that we want to continue to have the parking revenue.
Yeah.
Um, and so, and and because we are changing in between, I would recommend that if you do get fall off.
A loss in the other businesses, recommend it to the the people losing the nine.
Yep.
That that is a good option for them.
And and I'm not that up on the parking situation, but I know people always complain about parking because people like to complain and they don't want to walk a block, right? So um, from the business community standpoint, um, is this the highest and best use of those spaces at Morse Court when you're trying to get customers in, right? So you can park at Center Lot, because when I had an office in town, I was able to park there. It's two blocks, right?
I know.
It's two blocks. Do, does the business community, I mean, when people are looking for parking spaces, they always want it in Elm Street. How aware are people that Morse Court is right behind? Of course, you have to pay and you don't have to pay.
And they're super tight.
Yeah, well, they won't be as tight, right? They won't be as tight. But I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking.
The business premium spots were more a function, not so much of people not wanting to walk a block. It was um, people coming in, parking, they think they're just going to be there for an hour. They pay their metered space, they go to their office, and it became a three-hour and all of a sudden they were in there and they were incurring a lot of parking tickets. So there was that piece of it. So that was the recognition. This is a part of that overall initiative to get employees off of Elm Street and into the lots. What we found, though, is Morse Court is also being really heavily subscribed, oversubscribed. We're hearing that there's not a lot of empty spots. So back to your question about the the cap of the amount of spots that we're allowing for these business permits versus keeping the balance, the the shoppers. That's that's the part that we're we're really struggling with here, but I think that that limiting or capping the amount of business premium spots makes a lot of sense.
Except, except given we're losing eleven spots, we're not gaining any spot. I mean, I just, from a business community standpoint, encouraging people to go park free two blocks away
Right.
opens up the space for your potential customers.
Well, this also goes into the longer-term plan, and it's it's not going to happen immediately and it has to be more socialized.
Right.
But um, the idea of making Park Street free
Yep.
and charging on Elm Street will get, that lot is not full. And so, and Locust, if we can get those two lots to be more heavily utilized by making them free, um, I think you will get more people walking. I would, you know, I walk for free, free parking.
I do walk, too.
Um, I'm just cheap, though, that's why.
Frugal. I think frugal.
So, um.
And certainly for for somebody that works in an office, it's going to be parked once for six hours.
Right.
We really want them to park in some of these outer areas and not take up the spots of Morse Court where people are coming in. And the other, the timing of this is important because as you'll see from Stacy's memo, the expiration dates on all of this or the renewal dates is June thirtieth. So we want to give them
We want to give them a little credit.
advance warning that they need to make alternate arrangements.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be lost that they've been a, one of our best clients too, in terms of revenue and and supporting the the, you know, we put the availability out there and somebody capitalized on it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So we should be cognizant of that. We should promise the revenue and we should definitely communicate with whoever that is and make sure that they're aware of it.
That's why we we, I want to try to do this sooner rather than later, just to give them a heads up, let them decide who they want to keep in the lot and who, you know, um will have to go and park someplace else. And also give the other people the um opportunity to say, okay, I'm going to move to Center School, and then maybe we can offer them, um, okay, those nine, okay, we have another spot you can fill in over here because somebody else is not going to renew. Um, you know.
But I agree with you. After that business, I would shut it down because you're right.
Yes.
We are losing spaces by redesigning, and so we don't want to.
And those spaces will get, will get utilized. I will say sometimes that even if the employees do get a permit in the other lot, sometimes they might utilize Morse Court again, but if they're doing it on an hourly basis, just like anybody else would.
We would make more money on an hourly basis.
And that was the reason behind the raise as well from the Parking Commission to those premium per permits. If you look at the overall cost, um, they are doing very well uh getting the permits. If they're parking at least the six hours, five days a week.
Yeah, it's a, it's a heck of a lot.
Fifty weeks a year. You know, it's it's much more cost efficient for them.
Okay.
Right.
And ju- just one last thing. I'm sorry to interrupt. And one last thing, they also agreed to continue with that free program in Central, Locust, and Richmond Hill. So that was a.
Great.
So there's options.
Okay. Um, so if I could get, oh, no, I don't need to.
Review discussion.
Yeah, no.
Possible.
Possible.
Oh, possible, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Um, so if I could get a motion to approve fee changes and the quantity of the business permits uh prior to the current expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the Parking Commission.
So move.
Second.
And it would only be that cap for the Morse Court Lot?
Right.
Right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. Uh, who's doing, as Tiger, are you doing the one? Who's who's doing? Chris, good, because I was like, I thought it'd be Chris.
Oh, Joe. I'm just here to say yes.
I stopped Juan, so I said, Chris, and I said, oh, no, it's Joe.
Joe did, yeah. I'll sit with you. Thanks. He did text me and say, okay, this one's important. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I apologize.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Yeah, just, I mean, actually, just before we start, you know, as as a, um, Joe was supposed to present today and his father passed unexpectedly. And so, um, yeah, our hearts go out to the Zagron Street family on the loss of his father, so.
Okay. Sorry.
All right, Tiger.
So the uh, this is a request um from us, from Joe, from the Department of Public Works to enter a contract with ComNet, an amount of eighteen thousand, seven sixteen seventy-one, plus the contingency of uh ten percent contingency of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars for a total cost of twenty thousand five eighty-eight seventy-one. And it's for the uh new installation of a fiber optic cable at the police station, at the new police station building.
At the old now.
The old now, right, the soon to be, yeah. The old now.
The new new.
ComNet's been fantastic to work with. They've uh, they've been more than um willing to come at it moments' notice. They've done fantastic work. They were the ones that willing to come at it moments' notice, they've done fantastic work, they were the ones that came in and spent two days down at Lapham when we had a, an unexpected break. Uh, two long, very long days, so, uh, and they've done great work for us in the past, they, uh, you know, we recommend that they go forward with this contract. And the money's available, I'm sorry.
Have we not had fiber at the police station before?
We have, we have to move it, um, because of where they're bringing the new driveway in. So they're gonna back it out completely, back to where it is coming down south half and then make a sweep, go back on the other side of the right side of the building if they're looking at the front doors now. So it's a, it's kind of an extension, then they have to do a full, what they call, um, hot.
We'll mark where it is, right?
All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with CommNet Communications in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents, plus a contingency of one thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars for a total cost of twenty thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. The project entails the installation of new fiber optic cable at the new police station building.
So move.
Second, it's unanimous, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks for this.
All right, Tiger, Meat Park tables.
So this first item is for purchase of, uh, four accessible tables, um, similar to the ones that we have down at the lodge, uh, and elsewhere for, uh, for Meat Park, what we have is we have a, we don't have enough of the ratio, if you will, from accessible seats to, and accessible tables to, um, standard seats and standard tables. Uh, and then this will also allow us the opportunity to then put some up on the new Meat Park Pickball Patio and then intersperse throughout and give us a, a nice mix for down in the area where. Vendor Cedar Forest products, we use their, we bought some from them last time. Because the, the vendor that we originally had takes eight to ten months to get here, these will take six to eight weeks. So because of the lag, we went with a new vendor and, uh, you can't necessarily tell the difference between the tables. There's already some out there, if you, you know, go out there and take a look, you might not be able to see. Um, they gave us a three percent state discount, uh, the freight is fourteen hundred and fifteen dollars, so the total is six thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty cents. And the funds are currently available.
Hey, Tiger, this visual, how is that ADA's?
It's not, I didn't have the ADA one, the one, what'll be, is one, one seat will be gone, one, one of the edge, one of those, uh, seats will be, will be not there. That's correct, and it'll be green, not red.
Okay, and what, um, like, what are they made out of and how long are they gonna last?
They're made out of metal, um, and they've got a nice coating on the top of it that is, uh, who, um, easily cleanable. But it allows fluids to drip through so it doesn't get stuck on the table, um, and they'll last ten to twenty years at least. Some of the ones that we have at the lodge are, are, came with the, you know, when we built the lodge, put them out there, so they've been there all that time with no problem. They don't seem to show wear at all.
That's great, outdoors, leading step outdoors can show a lot of wear.
It's a smart design because it doesn't hold rain, so literally you get a rainstorm and it dries quickly.
Correct.
They, they've worked really well, but that, back to that question on ADA, how does it, how does it support? I'm just trying to picture how that.
Why it doesn't tip over?
Yeah, so did the, did the legs sit on the ground?
Legs sit on the ground, yeah, so you, yeah, the, um, you'll just see that one, one, that, the fourth area removed. And then it has enough space for, yeah, it has enough space for, uh, toe space, knee space and maneuverability underneath it, underneath the table. There's some there already now, there's, there's, I think that there's at least one, if not two, they just happen to pull it up to a bench all the time and, and, uh, utilize the bench as the additional fourth seat, if you will, so we continue to have to pull it back out again to make it accessible. But you'll see that's, you know, retrofitted by the, by the populace at the time.
How's the price compared on these tables compared to what we've paid in the past?
It's just. Very close, uh, it's actually the same price that we paid last time.
Yeah, cause I mean, they're, they're, they're expensive, but they're.
That's a pretty good deal, if you, if you priced outdoor furniture.
Yeah, yeah, if you, and, and the, the length of, uh, life on these things has been forever. You know, and you go down the, the lodge now and they look the same as when they were put in, they really do wear well, so, you get what you pay for.
Yeah, um, just a quick question, you said that, um, these are just additional, we're not getting rid of any.
We're not gonna get rid of any, no, we actually need more, so now we're, we're adding in these to then be able to make sure our ratio is at least as good as, if not better than what's required.
Okay, great, all right, so if I can get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a, wrong one, sorry. Uh, to enter into a contract with Emmy O'Brien and Sons in the amount of six thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty cents inclusive of freight for the purchase of four accessible tables at the Meat Park Lodge.
So move.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Bristow Bird Sanctuary.
So this next item is for repair of, uh, the fencing that's surrounding Bristow Bird Sanctuary. Uh, we had a tree fall recently, came down and, and came, uh, onto adjacent property owner and unfortunately took out the corner post, which is the most expensive, um, post that we have, the most expensive installation. Gannon Fence had done both fences, if you will, the, the fence along Route one oh six and then the fence leading between the property and, uh, Bristow. So we went back to them for a quote to repair. And this will be, uh, replacement of the twenty linear feet of the black vinyl chain link fence and then add the three rail, uh, wire on top that we had added, um, previously about a couple of months ago. Um, and then, uh, fix that corner post and then the, uh, and then the mid rail. Uh, price is one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, I added in a ten percent contingency, only because if he sees another post that's bad and it's tweaked and he can't necessarily get everything to work, then I wanted to be able to have that capability. I don't foresee being, using it, but I just didn't wanna have that situation, so the total is two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. And the funds are currently available in the, uh, Bristow Park, uh, line item for the parks budget.
Um, just in terms of the unexpected expense, so why is there money available in Bristow?
We have money in Bristow for maintenance, so we have a, we have a line item for maintenance of Bristow, that's where it's coming out of, if you will.
Yeah, questions? Okay, so no other questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Gannon Rustic Fence in the amount of one thousand nine hundred forty dollars plus a contingency of two hundred dollars for a total cost of two thousand, one hundred forty dollars. The project entails a removal and replacement of twenty linear feet of black vinyl chain link fence at Bristow Bird Sanctuary. It's unanimous, thank you, uh, blanket purchase order approvals.
Okay, so this is a, a series of, of purchase orders because of the, um, we've, uh, surpassed the ten thousand dollar, uh, amount allowed. So the first is for, excuse me, for Hussey Brothers to remove, there's a small gray bump out on the back of the playhouse. It was a mechanical room, a small mechanical room and storage room on the backside, we need to remove that in order to be able to put in, um, the accessible ramp in the new staircase, it allows us to actually come closer to the building versus coming back further out into the parking lot. Um, Hussey Brothers had already removed the one large, uh, white building in the back, so we asked them for a price to remove this. It gives a price of two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the complete removal. We had some, we have some issues along the base of the water, of the, of the playhouse itself, or water infiltration is coming in, so we'll be able to take care of that. Um, as well, that was a price of one thousand dollars. Uh, we had an emergency repair for the playhouse fire alarm from Security Solutions for six hundred dollars. We asked for a price from Vinnie's Custom Iron for, uh, to disassemble and then, uh, refabricate and, uh, make new the, uh, playhouse sign for two thousand, five hundred dollars. Castor Moving, we had them come in and we were granted a, uh, gifted a conference room table for the HR room. The HR table actually was starting to collapse, we had some problems with it, had to reinforce it. And, uh, we have a very nice new conference table that was donated by a local, um, business in town. And then, uh, lastly, we had some, uh, electrical work at the Irwin Barn Project, we actually had to move some of the services out of the way for, uh, some of the new, um, shoring and the structural items that are going in at the Irwin Barn, so Darian Electric gave us a price of a thousand dollars to take care of that work. All the monies, we have monies available in each one of these current projects to, uh, satisfy each one of the, each one of the items.
Any questions?
No change in the playhouse sign, right, that's iconic.
Notch, no, no, it's, it's basically, it's a, yes.
Right, it was, it was painted?
It was painted, he's, yeah, he's, he's gonna, he's gonna strip the playhouse sign and then, uh, repair it and then repaint it.
Cool.
So it's basically coming back refurbished, if you will.
Okay, great, no further questions, I'll have, uh, ask for a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to approve the following blanket purchase orders as follows, Hussey Brothers, remove rear bump out on playhouse building, two thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. Hussey Brothers Waterproof Playhouse Foundation, one thousand dollars, Security Solutions, Playhouse Fire Alarm Emergency Repair, six hundred dollars. Vinnie's Custom Metal Fabrication Playhouse Sign, two thousand, five hundred dollars, Castor Moving, HR Conference Room Table Move, six hundred seventy-five dollars. And Darian Electric, Irwin Park, Irwin Barn Project, one thousand dollars.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous, okay, loader plow.
So this next is a request, uh, from the Highway Department to, uh, purchase a new loader plow, um, from Chadwick Baross. It's forty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, it's a, it's for our loader, it's a Max Pro ten forty-eight, eighteen LE. It's got an eight, eight foot wide mold board within two five foot extensions on it. Um, it's got a specific type of cutting blade on it whereby it actually will reduce the amount of salt and bracers that we need to use because it'll actually be able to take out a lot more of the material. Um, we had an original budget of twenty thousand dollars slated for this, but the numbers skyrocketed right after, uh, right after, while we were in budget discussions, um, Board of Finance granted us a transfer of funds of twenty-two thousand, two forty-five to cover it. So we have the total funds available of forty-two, two forty-five and we request, uh, um, permission to purchase the item.
When are you gonna get it?
That, I'll save that for our quiet hero, Mo. Yeah. He does blush, I had to do that, I, I had to do it, I just had to do it, I had to ask him in here to kind of, you know, he, he didn't wanna be here, but I had to ask him.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Yeah, so our, our quiet hero, um, when do we, when, when, when will you get it? I mean.
Uh, it, I, I believe it's in, it's, it's in stock.
Oh, it's available, okay, cool.
These plows are absolutely great, they, uh, I, I can send them out about an hour before we start to send the tractor trailer, um, dumps out and stuff and a pile of snow, so when, when we're paying the contractors, they're actually loading, they're not chasing snow around. Just because he can close up the, um, wings, he can box snow and every intersection gets filled with snow. So then the trucks, then the loaders just load and we get them out of town, it works great.
Any other questions?
Keep that snow out of town.
So does this just have one purpose, this machine, just to load?
Well, it's an attachment to the loader, it's not, it's a, it's an attachment to the loader.
It's a south for the loader, but it's, it, like, for doing the lumberyard lot, it's, it's amazing.
Okay.
All right, if there are no further questions, if I can get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Chadwick Baross in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars plus a line item transfer of twenty thousand dollars for a total cost of forty-two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Mo. All right.
So this next item is, uh, in working with the Crisis Advisory Board from the schools, um, we went out, we identified a series of areas that need to improvement for, uh, school safety and security. And one of the thoughts is that we need to have additional bollards placed around Saks School. We have a quote at present for all those, for all five schools, if you will, um, that's being reviewed by the Board of Ed. But subsequent to that is that these, I call them lipstick type ones that are at Saks, had to be removed in order for us to then get the proper placement of the new bollards. They won't be removed until we're ready to have the new bollards in place, but I wanted to have the contracts ready, tie the contractor up, let him know. It'll probably be in the, in, in the summertime, um, to take care of this, there's a series of, of, uh, these bollards throughout Saks, um, specifically in the front. So we'd like to have those removed and then at that time, put in the new bollards with a better placement, a better location, if you will, and a better look, um, than the ones that are here. So we asked Hussey Brothers for a price, he gave us a price of three thousand dollars, I added a contingency of fifteen percent, four hundred and fifty dollars only because we're digging into the ground, digging in that area, um, for a total of three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and the funds are currently available. But again, we won't, we'll, we'll get to him up and ready and tied up that he's gonna come and do the work. Board of Ed should be, uh, hopefully approving this, this purchase, we'll bring it to you for, for, uh, enactment. We'll buy the bollards, they'll be here in about six weeks and then we'll start placing them around, around town, around the schools.
Well, this is, it's, it's, if we're talking about safety, obviously we're all over this, but it's, this is one of those projects where kinda wanna know what the whole nut is gonna look like, right? I mean, because this is the beginning of something that's a much bigger.
The bollard placement is, we, it's thirty thousand dollars worth of bollards throughout the schools, they, they have the monies available.
That you actually, that you actually, the, the perk, the bollards are purchased, then we install them.
Well, they're just placed, yeah, they'll be placed, they won't be installed, no, these ones, they, they're similar to the ones that we're using in the downtown area. So they're heavy enough to stop a vehicle, but then we can actually move them at will if we'd like to, with a loader, you know, with, with machinery. Um, so we went out with the Crisis Advisory Board and met and came up with a plan for each of the schools. We can certainly have them convey, I can tell you, you know, the placement of each one.
Yeah, it's just because, you know, we, we just redid, I don't wanna be the old guy on the front porch saying, get off my lawn, but we just redid Saks, right? I mean, so.
These were, these were, you know, I don't think that these were part of that.
Yes, no, I, I can tell you, I was in the building community for Saks, I didn't know what bollard was before this. So, um, I remember specifically a line item for the bollards for the safety as well. So when I said, why are these coming out, and I didn't understand that the new ones were coming in, but, um, and, and you know, you could say they're ugly, it's, it's a taste, it's a taste issue.
But is it, is it, is it really because?
Do they need to come out or can additional temporary ones go in?
They're in the, where they're placed at present, don't, doesn't necessarily fit with the new.
Awkwardly.
Right.
Cause we didn't do as many as they're doing now.
Correct, so then the spacing gets a little bit difficult and some of them are actually in an area where they're preventing access that we wanna have access, if you will, so if we put two in, we provide access in the middle of the lane versus having it stop in the center. Say for a stretcher coming into the nurse's office or an ambulance, you know, those kind of things right now. There's at least one that's placed in an area where we can't necessarily get into, into an area. Um, so if we put two in, we're allowed a lane to walk, to walk that stretcher through.
I just have a question, so.
Sure.
Um, just on why it's here versus Board of Ed budget.
Only because we were asked to take care of it, same exact thing that we had a discussion yesterday, we were asked to, to, to charge forward with it. So we came forward with the, with the, uh, when I, I likely will have to come forward with the others as well.
I just, I'm, I, but who's paying for, that's what I mean, is it coming?
It's gonna likely come out of their budget.
No, not likely.
Well, it, you know, it will come out of their budget, yeah.
We're just approving it, but it's, it's within their capital budget with this.
It's inside their, it's inside that whole nine hundred thousand dollars that they got.
The full redo will come out of the Board of Ed budget and, okay, so we're just approving.
Yeah, they have thirty-six thousand dollars for this line and thirty thousand of it is for bollards and then the remaining removal.
Is it for all the schools?
It's for all the schools.
Thirty includes all the schools.
All the schools.
And that's installed and done.
The Highway Department will be installing them, yeah, but that'll be installed and done.
So is that?
And when you say all the schools, that's.
That was in a, that was a special, that was, that was a grant.
In executive session, having to do with all the safety improvements.
Correct.
Yes, it was a grant that they received.
I think it was, I think it was last June, it was at the Board of Finance and it came to you guys afterwards.
So do they have a grant for this as well?
They have a, they were requesting a grant and then there was subsequent money from the town provided, if they didn't get the full grant amount. I don't know if they actually received the grant or not, but they received approval from the Board of Finance and the boards.
So it's already in their capital budget.
It's already in their budget.
It's, it's, all right, what's, what's the going rate for a bollard?
Depends upon which ones you buy.
Are they like a planter?
The planter's a little bit more expensive, the round bollards that we've been purchasing are around six to seven hundred dollars each.
Okay, and they're, and they're mobile, so you can move them where you need them to go, I mean.
They're mobile with machinery, yeah.
I'm not saying you and I can lift them up.
No, no, they're mobile with machinery.
Which may, you know, in the long run, it may make more sense, we actually built these permanently in, as opposed to having them. And I'm sure the technology's improved a lot too, over the years with different bollards.
I'm not sure which technology, but the mobility.
No.
Stone or cement.
Well, yeah, but these are much more attractive than just throwing a, um, a piece of mafia block in front of the school.
Correct. Yeah, the thought is too, is that if a student could sit on it waiting.
That's a, that's a, that's a builder's turn.
All righty, okay, and if no further questions, I am asking for a. No further questions. I am asking for a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Hussey Brothers in the amount of $3,000 plus a contingency of $450 for a total project cost of 340, 400, $3,450. The project entails the complete removal and disposal of the bollards at Saks Mill Store. Oh, one, I want a quick question. What are you doing with the old bollards?
They're likely, I, I don't think they're going to come out in the, in the.
Oh, you think they're going to break up?
Yeah, I believe it. Yeah, I don't think they'll come out in a nice piece.
We'll put them on the carpet.
Oh, yeah, roll them up.
Okay. So I, the motion's on the floor.
They'll storm somewhere, you know? To throw around.
All right, there we go. Broken bollards at the swap shop. Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All right. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Lapham Community Center.
So this is a request to remove the gazebo at the Lapham Community Center. We got a price of $2,735 for the complete removal of the gazebo itself, the sonnet tubes that are, that it's sitting on and restore the entire area and seed and hay it. The gazebo is, we'll consider it past its useful life. The benches on the inside had rotted out. We've got some other issues working on it and it'll either require some additional work to maintain or we should necessarily remove it. It is quite close to the work. Kapo Field will probably be in, you know, impacted by that work. So we feel it's best at present to have it removed. It, uh, it's not well used and it's inaccessible at present.
Was it gifted to us, the gazebo?
We don't know that. We ask.
Pay for this?
We believe it's been here.
Anyway, so let it go.
My only question, Tiger, is, you know, when we have something like this, obviously it's made out of, mostly out of wood and a couple sledgehammers. I mean, is there something, isn't that something a downtime for highway or somebody could?
If we had the downtime, we would take care of it.
You could show us downtime. Okay, got it. All right.
The what? What was it?
He was asking if we could do it downtime. He said no. All right.
We can't have a fire department drill on that thing?
There we go. There we go. Now you're thinking.
It just sounds like a lot to take down the gazebo.
I'm just, this $3,000, another $3,000. It's like, how else could we?
Yeah, I mean, right. It's just taking down a gazebo. How about a voice chat question?
It's taking down the gazebo, removing the footings, which is probably the majority of the work. Backfilling it, seeding and hay it, restoring and getting out. So it's not necessarily just knocking down that one.
And that's, that's how, yeah, I was envisioning just knocking a gazebo down.
Yeah, garden shed, no.
Yeah, and putting like a flower pot on it, you know?
Okay.
All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Hussey Brothers in the amount of $2,735 for the removal of the gazebo at Lapham Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous. Thank you. Water Pollution Control Facility Blanket Purchase.
So this is a, an increase to a previously approved blanket purchase order 240014 of $6,000 for the Holland Company. They, they provide our polyaluminum chloride, which is needed for our phosphorus removal so we can make our permit. And due to the historic increase in chemical costs over the year, they are the sole source product provider for this. They've been providing it for quite some time. I'll show you our five-year average and the material is necessary for us to maintain permit. We use about 20 to 30 gallons of it a day, more if it's raining. And we'd like to go forward with, with this increase in the purchase order.
Okay, any questions? So the UV project is, it came down, right, from?
Yes.
Yeah, so this could.
Yes, yeah. Two separate situations, but yeah, you know, all the same plant, but yes, that came down.
Our work going our way. Yeah.
Right.
We want to make sure we have the right chemicals at that facility.
And enough of them, yeah.
All right. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to increase a previously approved purchase order with Holland Company by $6,000 for chemicals needed at the WPCF.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you. This next is, to your comment, Amy, this is for the Water Pollution Control Facility for the design of our UV system, the new UV system. So AECOM has been working with us throughout. And due to the requirement or the increase in the fact that we need to put in the secondary unit, we were asking for an increase in their original contract. Original contract was $124,000 for the design of the one system. Now that the project has expanded, you know, from a million dollars plus to $5 million and we have a building requirement and additional trough and additional work. Obviously, the design element has changed as well. We have monies available and the proposed contract amendment is for $587,000, $587,12 to supplement the existing agreement. It'll be a total amount of $711,012 and this will get us all the way through to design and bidding.
So Tiger, can you just step back?
Sure.
The original, so what was the original?
We had, the original thought was that we just, we're going to have to replace our, just our UV system itself, just the one unit.
Just have an updated.
Just have an updated one, you know, basically design it and put it in place, million dollars. That's where we were. And then when they went back and looked, the regulations had changed in 2016, as we discussed, which then required a second unit, which is an entirely different build. Which is a build out of the building, an entire new, you know, way to get the affluent there. Two separate systems, two separate troughs, if you will. So the design requirement has changed. That was the reason why we had asked for the additional $4 million in capital. So the design, the, the design is commensurate with it. If you look at it from a percentage point of view, which is what we were, we were specifically looking at, it's, it's commensurate in that regard. But yes, you know, with, with the increased requirements goes along the increased design.
But the percentage, when you say the, the overall project is going to be 5 million?
Five million.
That includes the design costs.
That includes the design costs.
But yeah, but that, but of the 5 million, it's almost, almost a million dollars in design.
Well, correct. Three quarters of a million.
Yeah, that's huge.
That, is it, is that a normal, that's a normal occurrence?
You're getting, yeah, you're getting around 20% for design costs specifically for something of this nature.
Yeah.
You know, that.
It's obviously all custom, but you know.
Correct. And then there's the permitting associated with it and the contact with DEP and the, the back and forth between them and us, that they will handle all of that. So, yeah, you know.
Tiger, remind, when we first, this first was in the capital budget, what was the, was it 6 million we, we?
Six and a half.
Six and a half.
Right.
And then where did it end up getting approved at?
It got, it was at Ford. We had a million already in place. So it's a $5 million project.
Where all the money is.
Correct. Yeah, they had given us an estimate of say of four and a half to six and a half million dollars at the time that we started the budget process and then they came forward and dialed that back down again.
Okay. So we got to know your current, got to do that.
Correct. To an overall $5 million with inclusive of design costs.
So did they say how long this process will take?
About six months or so.
All right. So that takes us to the end of the year and then when would they start construction?
We're looking, we were hoping to break around sometime next, next spring. That was the reason why we couldn't necessarily kick this into the, we had looked to kick it, but we want, we're at 24 years with our current system. So we're pushing AECOM because we're at 24 years of the current system or more. So that was, that was the reason. I didn't want to go into another fiscal year. I want to be in the ground or, you know, breaking ground this year, this fiscal year.
It might be the least sexy, expensive project we've done in a long time.
Yeah. Infrastructure, you don't really see what you're getting, but it's nice when you have clean water.
Yeah, no, when you drink it, you gotta, it's gotta be clean. But you can't really drive over it or.
This is not drinking water.
It's not sexy.
This is not drinking water. Just so we all know. That's true.
It's actually held to a higher standard than the drinking water, to be perfectly honest.
There was a bat with somebody to drink it, so.
There was, back when we first opened the plant.
Well, we watched it. We watched it go, you know, exit the building, which is.
Correct. Correct. But we are held to a higher standard. So because we, because we feed the five mile and because we are the five mile during the summer.
Okay. All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to amend an existing contract agreement with AECOM by the amount of $587,012 in order to perform design and bid phase services for the replacement of the ultraviolet system at the Water Pollution Control Facility.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Magnetic flow meter replacement.
Right. So this is a, this is a contract with Aaron Associates. They've been working at the plant since its inception. They were the installer of this equipment and basically this equipment has passed its useful life now and we're into the replacement phase. So we're asking to replace our ROSPump 3 magnetic flow meter, the transmitter at the plant. Aaron did the initial installation, has done the maintenance on it. We feel, you know, it's a, it's kind of a neat story where the father installed it all and the son was working with him and now the son took over the business and the father retired, so he's still working through it with us for a total of $6,755.07 and the funds are currently available in the, in the treatment plant's budget.
Tiger, do you know how, how long the, this material or this equipment's expected to last?
About 20 years. This is, this is, this is with the plant. This came with the plant.
Okay.
So we're looking at, hopefully it gets the same amount with, with proper maintenance and care.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, sometimes like the updated plug and play and high tech stuff just doesn't last as long. So I mean, I guess we'll see.
But this screams value compared to the last one today. Screams big value.
It's 100.
All right. Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Aaron Associates in the amount of $6,755.07 for the replacement of the magnetic flow meter transmitter at the Water Pollution Control Facility.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Banco Pool Parking Lot.
So we went out to bid for the paving of the, of the repaving of the Banco Pool Parking Lot. We received four bids. We went out to separate, seven separate contractors, got four bids back. Burns Construction came in at the low at $286,330. The, we added a 15% contingency of $43,000 for a total of $329,330. The monies are in the fiscal '26 budget. Board of Finance approved it the other night. The Town Council will see it on the 23rd. They were originally scheduled to see it this evening and then they postponed their meeting. So we'd like to have approval now pending their approval of the overall budget next Tuesday night. And then we can get them working because we have to be done by May 23rd. I have them, in their contract is May 23rd because John opens the pool on May 31. So the thought was to give us an extra week in there just to float. And I need to, he has a month's worth of work and a week afloat and I need to get him out there working.
And Tiger, this is just the pavement, nothing to do with curbing, nothing to do.
No, this will be, there'll be a brand new granite curb that'll go where the, where the existing sidewalk is that had a blacktop curb that's mountable. It'll be a brand new granite curb with a concrete sidewalk behind it. Compliance ramping, since we didn't have compliant ramping at the time. And then curbing along, so the entrance way will be curved nicely with granite to give you a nice entrance into the park and into the, into the pool. And then the, the rest of it will remain. The rest of the curbing is pretty tight and is, is it pretty good in shape. So we're just going to be milling and paving and then restriping.
Right.
So this is the entire lot, right?
The, the entire pool lot as you come in and head to the left. Yeah, to the right, we call that the paddle lot. That's not part of this project.
And it's not the driveway in?
It's the driveway in as well. Yeah, so as you're coming.
Or where does it start?
It's through the, the, it comes from the road and then from the, from Lapham Road and then from the corner, from the corner where the, basically the, it opens into the other parking lot, if you will.
So you'll do it in front of the pool too?
Yes, all of it. Yeah, so it'll be a whole new, all of that was installed 20 plus years ago. All of it needs to be removed, so.
Okay, so this is the redo of the original lot?
Yes, it is. Correct.
All the markings and arrows and everything, because people get confused like, you know.
Everything will be restripped. Right.
Can we, you know, I'm, it just, because this contingency is a big number. You know, can we look at, on these paving projects, what are average contingency we've needed? Because I mean, it's just a lot.
That's coming back in May to give you the whole list of everything.
Yeah.
Yep. Typically, we don't use it. All right. I'll be honest, we're around 4%, 2 to 4%.
So I'm going to do the John Howe to you.
But I, I want to be able to sleep. That's my problem is I just want to be able to sleep and I only have a month to do this job. So I don't have any time to come back and wait. That's my problem. Normally, we don't use it at all, you know. We don't, we, there's no real reason to use it per se. The only thing that comes into play as well is, is, we talked about this at the Board of Finance level. So we're saying to mill and pave two inches and we pay by the time.
Yeah, no, I know it's all about how much you lay. We had this conversation. I got it.
At that point in time, if he lays it down, I got to pay.
I got it. I just, I literally would like to have an analysis of how much contingency we have used on just paving projects. I understand every deal, every job we do is a little different, but it's a lot. It's a lot. And so we're going for, you know, when I see what we had to increase the budget this year, I'm having agita. So I'm not sleeping. And so I just, I need to have a better sense of, you know.
Well, we have that, like I was saying, we have that overall and Tucker's been asking me to put it on the agenda. So I said, May would be the best time to come in and then I can just then shorten that down to just paving as well. So you'll have the overall of everything that we've ever asked for since July of '21, I believe, and then shorten that down. I could just shorten down that list and show you the paving project itself and show you where we're at.
Okay, great. Okay. All right. So any other questions? All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Burns Construction in the amount of $286,300, $286,330 plus a contingency of $43,000 for a total cost of $329,330. The project entails the milling, reclaiming and repaving of the Steve Banco Parking Lot and Access Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Capo Baseball Stadium Construction.
So this is for the design development, the, the, the design development phase of the, of the Capo Stadium itself. Given the fact that we got a positive read from the Board of Finance and we're hopefully, that the Town Council will forward as well. We're under a timeframe to get to wetlands and then to P&amp;Z and then to order to finish the project and then get out to bid. So we're actually having to be a dual phase where we're working on the plans while we're going for approval to try to stay on schedule itself. So this, this is for each of the phases. For Richter and Seegan is the landscape architect and the lead designer on the project. TLB Architecture is the architect of note and McCord Engineering is doing all of our site, site plan and drainage. They gave us proposals for the next phase for design development through bidding and the total is 329,375. I added a $10,000 contingency because some of that money in there is permitting and they're basing their, on an hourly basis for permitting. So however many, how much time it takes them to meet with P&amp;Z and then actually sit at the meeting, things of that nature, it's a very hard thing to, to quantify, if you will. So they gave it to us on an hourly basis. So I added a contingency of $10,000 just for that permitting phase for a total of 339,375. And this will be a contribution from the Athletic Foundation towards this project of this amount.
Oh, this is all on the Athletic?
It's on the, right. It's on the NCAA.
And you said 339.
339, 375. Correct.
That's not what it says in this. So 10,000 contingency.
Sorry.
And that's on McCord's side. The contingency is for McCord.
It's on all three, to be honest. All three will be at the permitting phase. It's correct. Right. It's a general, yeah. It'll be, it'll be allocated depending upon need.
So 339, 375. Thank you.
And it's all, this is, I talked to Mike Benaventno about this, but this is all coming from the Athletic.
It's all coming from them. Yes.
All, all private and, you know, this is, this is, again, one of those, one of those projects where we're so lucky to have this kind of money coming from private. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of money in donations, though.
Right.
It's the beginning of hopefully what will be a great project up there.
Any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works in partnership with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation and New Canaan High School Athletics to enter into contracts with the following design services firms for the Capo Baseball Stadium Construction Project as follows. Richter and Seegan, $152,240. TLB Architecture LLC, $133,735. McCord Engineering Associates, $43,400. Contingency, $10,000 for a total project of $339,375.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Project survey.
So this is for RKW to come in and as part of the P&amp;Z permit, we've got to calculate building coverage and locate some additional wetland flagging for the, for the turf field installation itself. So RKW did the original survey And then has to come back out again and do a building calculation. Um that's part of the permit for P and Z and then some additional wetland flagging for for wetlands. He gave us a price of three thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars and uh we have the monies available.
And this is this is private or public, the three thirty?
Typically, we take care of the surveying.
Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
Right.
So this is town money?
Yeah, this is town money. Typically, we take care of the surveying issues, you know, since we didn't have the data prior.
Makes sense.
And the monies are available, sorry.
All right, so. Okay, um so any other questions? So could I get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with R K W Land Surveying in the amount of three thousand three hundred twenty five dollars? The project entails surveying of the existing buildings and to compute building coverage and local recent adjacent wetland flagging at Capo Basefield. Baseball field for the possible installation of a new turn field.
So it's turf it's turf field, not turn field.
Yeah, I was like, what is that?
Second.
Okay, it's unanimous.
So this next is for Dunning Phase One B, which would be the entryway.
So I just need to go back to item. Anne, can you come up?
We just need to make sure that if um if the Athletic Foundation is covering it, that we have those funds in place to set up your budget.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, so that money will come from the Athletic Foundation. We don't currently have those funds on here.
No, we do not.
So we need to set up the budget. Once they send it to us.
Okay.
We can then set up the budget. Otherwise, we can't do it until the authorization.
Okay.
So.
And you're talking about item twenty four, the three thirty nine.
Twenty four, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the money they'll they'll typically wire the money in, A C H transfer in it for the community foundation. And then they'll set up their accounts and then I'll bring the proposals to you.
Okay, so they'll have to set up the budget though too for the entire project at that point?
We would only set up the portion of the donation because we don't have the authorization yet, which will be next week, as as Tiger was saying. We'll get the authorization for the full project, but the portion that they're donating, we then with those donated donated funds, we can move forward with the piece that Tiger needs.
Okay.
But we need that money in place.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anne. But before we get into actual constructing this whole project, they have to go through all those, you know, authorizations. The match will be cash in hand with the town before we start constructing.
It has to be because she can't sell the contract.
Yeah, and I can't put a budget in there, so they can't spend anyway. So unless we have all the pieces, we can't set up the budget to allow any spending to go ahead anyway.
Just being clear.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike said a bunch of times that the money's there. It's just a matter of getting the, you know, getting all the approvals they need to get get it going. And there's like no shovel in the ground until we have the money. That's always the case.
That's correct.
These are this is the design part of it, but also it's also signaling the beginning of this project because we've we've already approved the two million. We've we've said, hey, let's go. Um as long as everything gets approved and we're we're ready to go, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dunning Stadium Phase One Construction Documents.
So this is for Phase One B, called Phase One A was the donor wall. Phase One B would be the entryway to try to finalize or finish that whole entrance. Right now, the donor wall kind of sits there a little bit off by itself. So this will continue and finish the entryway um as we work towards the press box itself. So there's some a minor tweaking of the plans to make sure that everything works by pulling one piece out while we're trying not to do everything because it was designed as whole. Yeah, I got to pull the pull the pieces out. And because we're doing a small piece, there's a little bit more of an engineering work as far as drainage goes. That's why you'll see uh McCord's got a larger piece in this this puzzle uh at present. So the the total is uh is forty nine hundred dollars from Richter and Seagan. Again, they're the lead landscape architect on the project. And McCord Engineering for four thousand two hundred dollars for a total of nine thousand one hundred. And then once the plans are gelled, then Turner can go out and um revisit with their contractors for the for the bids that they um for bids to provide.
So Tiger, remind me for for the Dunning project, which was big, it was like not this budget, the one before.
Correct.
Where it was a two million authorization from the town to be matched. Um and I know they did put the donor wall up and Athletic Foundation paid for that.
That's correct.
This in in a lot of the two million that we were spending was like all the not sexy stuff, the infrastructure and stuff. So this. The this Phase One B, the entryway, is this a town uh N C A match or is this an N C A?
The N C A F will pay for this.
Okay, so we we're we're not getting into all of our potential expensive uh.
Not at present.
Infrastructure. So this is just so this is going to be again, N C A F stepping up with this and okay.
Yeah, we kicked that one budget cycle out, the all the.
Yeah, I just wanted to know with the the teamwork where our money was versus.
Any other questions? Not if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works in partnership with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation and New Canaan High School Athletics to enter into contracts with the following. Design services firms as part of the renovation and reconstruction of the Dunning Stadium interest entrance area and donor wall. Richter and Seagan, four thousand nine hundred dollars. McCord Engineering Associates, four thousand two hundred dollars for a total project of nine thousand one hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
White Birch Road Wall Repair.
So this is a this is a in response to a motor vehicle accident we had on December twenty second of twenty twenty three. Um where if you can see by the picture, a car came in and in essence annihilated the uh. These pillars that are in the right of way. Um so we asked Fourteener to come back and give us a price. He had done subsequent work at Park Street, the uh the entranceway on Park Street that had been damaged by a motor vehicle accident, Mead Park. And on Putnam Road, all three were M V As and he came back out and did a nice job whereby you can't necessarily tell the difference between. What was existing and what is uh what's reconstructed. So he gave us a price of five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. We have funds available in the budget, but we do anticipate reimbursement from the at fault parties. We just need the we need approval to go forward with the project, do the project, and then we can have Kerma chase down um the the at fault party.
Yeah, that was going to be one of the questions is, you know, if it's a motor vehicle accident, you would think the insurance would be paying for any damage.
Typically, we we have to we do the work and we submit it out, yeah, have them do it and and they'll. At that point in time, it comes down to a lot of times it's a negotiation. Sometimes they only give us eighty percent on the eighty percent eighty cents on the dollars, you know. Kerma will say, take the uh, you know, take the, so to speak. We don't know what they'll say in this point. They give what's customary and, you know.
So I had I just have a question because I mean, I know this thing. I always thought that that was that road's pillars. So they're in the right of way, so.
They're in the right of way.
Did the town construct those pillars?
I don't know if the town constructed them at the time. They were there for quite some time.
Donnie Reed built those back in the day.
Who's Donnie Reed?
Donnie Reed, Donnie Reed worked for the highway department for a long time.
So why, I'm okay, I'm just gonna throw it out there. Why are we reconstructing this? Because it to me, it doesn't really like. It's not it's not a town. It it looks like it's for that residence and it doesn't really provide safety or it looks like a stanchion for that that street as someone who's had to put stanchions in.
Mm hmm. It's it's in the right of way as part of we feel that we should just.
Why don't we just get rid of it then?
Well, it has some historic value to it.
And what would that be? What would that be?
Well, when you get off the exit, you always see, oh, I'm home. There it is, you know, that's that's.
I think it also helps delineate the fact that when you get off the exit, you know, you're going onto a onto a local road.
You just want to like make it grass there?
Yeah, I mean, I well, because now every time anybody hits that, we have to reconstruct it.
How many times has it been hit and?
It's the first time that I know of.
Yeah, I just I'm I'm a little like I don't understand this one because it's it's not really a town asset. It happened to be there for some reason. Why don't we just get rid of it and then we don't have to pay for it to be reconstructed?
I think it does. I think it helps delineate the fact that it's a local road coming off the interstate. We have a lot of problems where people coming off the interstate actually will off the highway will come and. Think that they're still on the entrance ramp, drive down the road and find out that they're not. We've had the people drive into driveways off of one oh six. In essence, drive up the driveway and then realize and they installed pillars themselves for the exact same reason to then say, okay, this is a residence or, you know, private drive.
What I did as I was on a four, I mean, this is the conversation. Is it a private? Group that should be doing that or is it town money? Because it's, I mean, on my road, when we wanted to do that, we paid for the stanchions to go in. The town did not pay for the stanchions to go in.
Son Father Peters or is it son or the other?
My prior, my prior location.
The uh all I can tell you is it was in the right of way. It's it's distinctive to the neighborhood. I'm certain that the neighbors wanted people to be replaced. And uh that that's the reason why we're bringing it forward.
It is going to get paid for, I mean.
We're seeking reimbursement, yeah. So that's that's I can't say we're not they damaged it. It was, you know, if you consider it's in our right of way and it's our property, they should be paying for it.
But we get a we do pretty well.
Track record is pretty good.
Yeah.
We've never been denied.
Yeah.
You know, we've only had certain times when they've said, well, we'll give you eighty percent or ninety percent on the dollar. We've never been denied for anything. And we've only I think we've had one instance where I had to take less than what was what was uh um what was expended, if you will. That was for a lamp post replacement, but the other lamp post replacements from other insurance companies were paid in full.
You know, I wouldn't put a new one in, okay, but.
It's an existing landmark.
Existing with a high probability almost recovery. I bet a stretch, a landmark, but um no, no, but I wouldn't put new ones in, okay, but this is one that's been there. It's some body had a car accident. I was gonna say, do you have to recuse yourself? Okay, I got no dog in the fight here. Okay, I don't care that much one way or the other, except it was there. It got injured. We can replace it. Injured is.
Well, so to me, we are getting reimbursed as insurance involved and it if you had a similar incident, let's move it to a different location. If if somebody hit the hit a a sign like welcome to Canaan or, you know, took out a bunch of rocks or all that stuff.
I agree, I agree.
It would be the same kind of thing.
Quite the same.
Well, I mean, you're looking at it more like a neighborhood thing, but it's kind of, you know, it is in the right of way of. To me, it's people drive through there and and I think to Tiger's point, it is a private, not a private, it's a public road. But it delineates it from the highway and it's that's probably why they were there from the beginning. That's just a guess, but.
Sounds like somebody liked somebody that lived on that street and they gave them some stanchions and now we're going to pay for it to renew it. But that's, I mean, whatever. It is what it is. I mean, um it's insurance. I'm not a fan of these kind of projects.
My only concern would be, I think we want to wait till Kerma determines because if it isn't on private property.
It's not on private property.
Right away.
Okay, because I know then they will.
I mean, if you're more comfortable waiting until we get reimbursed, but I still think that, you know, it's 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 worth replacing.
Okay, let's let's I would I would move to take this off of this agenda. Let's find out. The insurance and then we can bring it back if it's going to be um reimbursed. I don't want I don't want town funds being used for this. So if sure insurance is going to pay for it, that's great, but if if it's not, then I don't want town funds using being used for this would be my request.
That's fine.
You're gonna make the neighborhood have a lemonade sale and make the difference.
That would be a good idea. That would be a good idea.
They don't work anymore. No one is cash. Lemonade stands don't work. No one is cash.
It's not it's not it's not gone. It'll come back.
Okay, yeah. All right, so uh moving on to the Morse Court Parking Lot Area Survey.
Right, so I went to um so with everything that that we're trying to accomplish at Morse Court and also the surrounds. So if you will, the uh the sidewalk that's adjacent to Morse Court on Main Street from Morse Court to Cherry and then. On Cherry from Maine to South will all need to be redone. Those two sidewalks are in disrepair. Those will require a state permit, an encroachment permit, and they require a forty scale drawing, an engineer drawing to uh. Get an encroachment permit. The only way to get that started is with a survey, if you will. So given the fact that we had the work going on on the Morse Court Lot, I expanded the uh. The survey out slightly to uh take care of work that we're going to be have to that we're going to have to do in the near future. To by putting together an encroachment permit and then work with the state towards replacing those sidewalks. I asked R K W for a price. They gave us a price of six thousand seven hundred dollars for a topographic survey of the Morse Court Lot and the surrounds as shown in the uh. In the memo. All I did was cut out the mobile station in the middle, if you will. And he's done very nice work for us in the past and uh we're asking for him to expedite this work for us.
So Tiger, as far as the sidewalks that need replacing, you're you're saying the ones on Maine themselves, is it?
On Maine, if you, yeah, if you walk down that stretch, you'll see.
That's that's been broken up a little bit on Maine.
I'm sorry.
Is it in terms of needing repair? Is that what you're?
Yeah, that both of those stretches are are in need of repair. And like I said, the the state requires a forty scale drawing. The the base of the forty scale drawing is a survey.
Any other questions?
We spend a lot of money on surveys. Yes, we do.
We're trying to get to the point where we have data for everything. We don't have data, so if we don't have the data, you know, that's the problem. The moment we have all the data, then, as I said, we'll do as-built surveys, which is a lot less, and then we'll have it going forward. And it's a lot less expensive to do an as-built than it is to do the initial.
Well, yeah, this the scope of this survey with the elevations and everything is surprising. I mean, you're getting you're getting a lot.
I need that, right. The topograph the topography, you know, added a larger element to it, but we need the topography for both the lot and for the sidewalk itself.
And then you'll be able to use it for other things, right? I mean, if you do wall work or whatever.
Absolutely, yeah. And it to Amy, to your point, we used to have a survey crew in town, so we used to have a permanent. We used to have a permanent survey crew in town.
Paying individually.
Yes, so we had so we had three people. There was it was a survey crew uh came here, yeah, so Ben was part of it. And then uh the gentleman who was the surveyor, he retired and they hired me instead as Capitol Projects and said, we'll survey, we'll take the survey out and go out, go out of a.
We had a full-time surveyor.
We had we had a surveyor, an instrument man and a rod man, yes. We had a full crew at the time.
So you need three if you if you want, if you want.
Nowadays, you necessarily don't because it gets a little bit more technical, right? So back then you had three people.
What would you need now?
Two.
Two.
Yeah, in essence, you might be able to get rid of it by one.
To look at, although you're telling me that we're going to need less of the survey work, but it would be interesting to see.
See how much we pay in service.
And would it make more sense to have that in-house?
We approve a lot of money.
We do.
Of course, yeah. That that would just be interesting. Maybe it's not a full-time gig. Maybe it's a, you know, beating up the your department with a little more help.
Right?
Yeah.
It might be an interesting thing to look at.
That's fine.
It would be an interesting thing to look at.
I agree. In all your free time, can we just look at that in all your free time?
This evening, yeah.
All right, so any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with R K W Land Surveying in the amount of sixty seven hundred dollars. The project entails a survey of the Morse Court Parking Lot and surrounding area.
So move.
It's unanimous, thank you. Okay, waving house, best for last.
Yes, so um we can give you an update on waving house itself. The uh the bathrooms are in essence complete. John was buying um furniture and and uh. Carpeting for one of the bathrooms, so we're in essence complete with the uh with the bathroom renovation itself and we're on to the elevator. The elevator is under design at present, meaning that we've uh released the um. The elevator company to uh provide shop drawings for us. We were able to redesign the elevator to stay within the the footprints in between the um. The staircase and the surrounding walls, the surrounding panels. We wanted to maintain the panels and we didn't want to move the uh. The staircase at all, the banister. Um so we were able to make it by inches within that area, but we were able to make it. So now we're at the point of shop drawings. Um they'll fabricate the shop drawings to ensure that what is specified in design can fit. Um and then we'll approve that to go to production at that point in time.
Who does the shop drawings?
The the elevator company does the shop drawing.
What's the name of this?
Champion.
Champion?
Yeah.
Okay, and and the reason I ask this, so for a little background. Like, was this six years ago perhaps? We actually had like this like committee evaluating the whole. They need to do an elevator. We need to do an elevator because we need if we're going to keep waving, we need to have ADA accessibility, right? And this was under the previous administration and it was a long, long time ago. There's a bunch of us and and people looked at every single option. It just so people know because it's it's back and um the. Almost unanimous, I mean, because the best place for it to go is kind of in that area. Where the stairs come down. I mean, there's just the logistics on that house are just so difficult, you know?
Well, I think, yeah, what Amy's point, what I think might be good is for me to bring Lee Cromwell back in just because you weren't here.
In California?
She can do a Zoom. Yeah, and she actually visits here quite often because she has she has family and friends here. And she can give you the the presentation that was given to all the boards at the time, you know, to show you.
I think that's important because it's it's been stale and like it's going to happen and people should know what's what's going to go on.
Right.
Well, and to that point, I think socializing the photo again into the press and getting it out there so people can actually see what's coming is important. I think that's a big part of uh bringing the bringing the public and the taxpayers along with us as far as, you know, you don't want somebody to say. you know, you don't want somebody to say, whoa, you know, I didn't know that was gonna happen and, uh.
Right, so, yeah, and, and I think it would be helpful because then, you know, there's a lot of why not this, why not this, why not that. Every, I, I sat in those meetings. Every single option, people say here or there and you go, well, you can't because of that and you can't because of this and the building is historical, the outside's preserved and, um, I think that would be helpful and I think as, as this is finally moving forward, I think people should know. Because, you know, waving, we're gonna keep waving it. Waving is not going anywhere, so people should know kind of what we're doing to make it usable.
Yeah, and before we take the next, the next steps actually become a point where you, um, you, you start to affect the building itself, right? So I don't wanna make the next step, which is cut a hole in the floor, start to build the shaft, things of that nature without actually everyone saying, okay, we understand it, we're, 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 you know, we under, you know, proceed, if you will, so I can have her come in either the next meeting or the one following. Because the shop drawings are gonna. Plus.
We, we don't take, we can't. It's at the beginning. You have public comment. So if you wanna come back another time and talk about it, because it's gonna be on the agenda a bunch of times. Um, anytime Waving House is on the agenda, you can make a public, if you have a question about this, you can make public comments. It's at the very beginning of the agenda. Every, every, every meeting, but once the meeting has started, we don't go back to public comment. That's okay. It's all right. Everybody learns, right?
We're glad some of the public's here.
I know, I know.
Yeah, but you know, we, but the, I mean, the, the positive thing about this is, like, Waving is old, it needs a lot of work, it needs help. The positive thing is the bathrooms, ADA compliant bathrooms are, where they're about to be signed off on, to be open.
Yeah.
Yep, so, so we're getting there so that the building can be more fully used. It's got issues and we're gonna have to focus on it, but, I think having Lee come in, I think people have to realize none of this was done flippantly. And it was, a lot of people spent a lot of time and then the previous administration disbanded the group for, I don't know why, but he did. So let's, we just wanna make sure people know what's going on, you know?
It may be interesting, now, was the, the group started only to look at the elevator location?
To look at all of it.
Yeah, it, it was the ADA compliance in the elevator, in the bathrooms and, and for people who don't know Waving, it's complicated. It was not built for ADA purposes. Every time you turn around, there's a different elevation, you know? And, uh, things have changed a lot from when they built it to now, but, um.
Yeah, we, we had, we had a high-end builder in town say, hey, I'll go in there and put the elevator where you want it. They came in and they said, oh, well, we'll, we'll put it right here. It's gonna be easy. And then they looked at it like, wait a second, this is not.
Nothing's easy.
You know, it's poured concrete walls and you'd have to knock this wall down and that wall down and move the floors. And by the time you're done, it's, it's excess of millions of dollars.
Yeah, and, and the interior, we'll have Lee talk about it, but it's done all over Europe, you know? Everyone, you know, you do these, these elevators within these big old houses, but, um, I think, you know, it, it's moving forward. It's gonna be a big, high-profile thing, so I think it'd be great if we get people reintroduced to it.
Yes, so I'll see if she's available for the May meeting. If she is, then I'll bring her back in May. And then, uh, she, like I said, she can give the presentation that she gave before, answer any questions that you have. I think it would be a good thing before we, you know, before we do anything that someone might not want, so that, uh, that would be helpful at that point in time. So, okay, we're, you know, this is the, this is the avenue we've chosen. Do we still wanna stay down this avenue, if you will? And if we do, great, and if we don't, okay, then we have to refocus at that point in time, revisit it and take it.
We, we'd request a real drawing, a real rendition of what it's gonna look like. I mean, not some sort of, hey, this is what they did in, you know, London. We need to know what it's gonna look like in that space here in the game.
We had a rendering done.
View from the stairs, view from, I got it.
We had, we had a, we had a rendering done previously, you know, and that's one of the things too, is that the shop drawing is necessary to finally, to see exactly how the framing is gonna work, to then be able to then give you a proper rendering, right? So you, right now you have a, you have a, a view as to what's gonna look.
Poster that was, I think.
Very similar. We're trying to get towards that. Yeah, we're trying to get towards that look because that's what we had, um, that's what we had kind of put out there. So we tried to stay to that look, but then when you get into then, okay, how are the framing gonna work and how is glass gonna work and how's everything gonna work? So it's gonna change a little bit, but the overall feel is that we wanted it to be, I didn't wanna touch the paneling at all. So I was like, that was, for me, I was, that was mandatory, so I wanted to sit inside that, that area. And then we were able to move in where it's, we don't have to touch the banister.
So did you hear that? We don't have to touch the banister, John. We don't have to touch the banister. So, we don't have to touch the banister for the elevator.
It'll be fun.
So, okay.
If I, uh, was just maybe when Lee comes in, it would be great, I think, to take pictures of the new, uh, bathrooms and put those up as well, so people know what's in there. Because not everyone's gonna come through and look and look pretty.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Let's wait till the carpet gets.
The carpeting, it's going in your house. Call, call Tracy.
Thank you, Tiger.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Joe. You got to bookend here.
Seat's warm.
Cheryl, you're not coming up? Mimi's safe and control.
I am.
Mimi's got the wheel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have Captain Ferengi with me as well. We're here this morning to propose Ever Gomez for the part-time position of police maintenance custodian. We had thirty-one applicants for this position and Captain Ferengi and I interviewed thirteen candidates. And we really feel that Ever Gomez is, Gomez is gonna be a great, uh, great addition to the team over there. He has several years of custodial experience. Um, and currently, because they're in rental space, we're gonna limit it to start with for fifteen hours a week because the landlord takes care of a lot of.
We don't have the full-time need right now because a lot of the things are taken care of by the property management group. So we just need someone on hand, kinda handle things as they come up, help us move cars around, help us take care of the lot and just keep things, handle things that kind of come up during the week that we can forecast. We're gonna need someone to accompany a vendor through the building who's gotta do a repair or things of that nature. Uh, right now, a lot of that's either takes up my time or we have to find officers available to stay with, stay with people as they walk, walk through the building. So, uh, we're pretty confident that the part-time position is all we need right now until we get back to our main, uh, main building. And he's also gonna work with, spend some time over there to see how they're installing the new systems at South Avenue. And in the event that this is something that transitions to a full-time position for him in the future, he'll at least already have a handle on how the systems work over there and what needs to be done if it goes wrong, that kind of thing.
Do we anticipate a full-time, uh, custodial person for, uh, the building once it's, uh?
Yeah, yes, we are anticipating.
So this is like a great tryout.
Yeah.
Correct. So you would only need one custodial position at the new, new building?
Traditionally, that's what we've always had.
Okay.
Um, you know, that, so we're just anticipating replacing that when we get back there.
These are all very neat.
Thank you.
But it's nice that he's able to do other things other than custodial work. Is that, you know, that's a, it's a nice, uh, change-up during the week, you know, whatever other tasks are out there, so that's great, that's great.
And this is contingent upon him successfully completing all the background procedure, which, you know, we, we should have done by the end of this week.
Great, okay, and just, because he's part-time, he doesn't go through that whole, um, probationary thing, or is this position not?
No, because with part-time, you can remove that position at any time.
Okay, so if he, he transitioned to full-time custodial stuff, then, okay, great. Um, any other questions?
Nope.
So if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Human Resources Director to hire Ever.
Gamis.
How was it, Gamis?
Gamis.
Gamis as a part-time police custodian.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot of interviews.
Did, I know, that's pretty impressive.
We had, we had a lot of applicants. It was.
Is it because people think it might morph into a full-time?
I think so.
Which is good, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and I'm just trying to get the flag policy up before I talk about this. You're like, where is it? Is it done? No, I know it's on your, I'm trying to find it in the list.
Oh, your draft, number thirty draft.
Number thirty, okay, thank you. There we go. Okay, so this is for me, um, it's, uh, I'd like to introduce a flag policy for the municipal buildings. This would exclude Board of Ed properties. They, I did forward our draft policy to the superintendent, um, in case they wanna do something similar, um, just so he has a draft of what, you know, I was looking to bring forward to this board. Just the history is that, um, my first week in office, I had an individual come up to me and ask to fly, um, another country's liberation flag. And, um, I guess my predecessor allowed a week of flying that flag and I was, I feel very, I feel strongly that the only flags that should be flown in municipal buildings are the American flag, the State of Connecticut flag and any town flag. You know, I was thinking about this whole, like, school flags and I, I really do believe that those should be reserved for the schools. I, the other thing that I'm trying to avoid is, um, who gets to fly, what flag when? When do we fly the, you know, um, like, if, if we did the school flags at the municipality, it's like, so we, we fly it for, you know, a football win. Then do we fly it for every debate win and do we fly, you know, I don't wanna have to make those calls. I don't think it's really appropriate for this office to be doing that, so, um, I really do believe that municipal buildings should, you know, really reflect the country and state and local things that you represent and, and it's not a free, it's not a speech mechanism. A flagpole in front of a municipal building, I believe, shouldn't be a, a speech mechanism. And so I just would like to, to make it very clean and, um, have those three, uh, uses. Plus, um, if there's a military, like a, a Pao Mee, usually they, um, include, you know, Pao Mee and military flags, you know, for just, you know, if there's certain events that we wanted to have those for, but. So I open it up to discussion and thoughts. Um, I know it's a new policy, so just wanna.
Are, do, are there, are there other towns that have policies like that?
Yes, Darien actually just instituted a very similar version of this policy, restrictive like ours. I'm not even sure they make a, an, an allocation for military flags, but, um, yeah, they, they ran into some issues down in Darien, so they decided that they were going to be very, um, restrictive about which flags were flown on town buildings.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different ways of recognizing, um, different wins or different, um, events in town. But the idea is that that flagpole that flies above the building is, is for this purpose only, which, I get it. Because there's a lot of, a lot of competing interests and, you know, you could see that it could become sort of a, I don't know. There, there's areas of misuse, I guess. What do you think, Amy?
Um, yeah, I was wondering what precipitated it, so, you know, and, and would you, would you discuss it? And, um, we don't need more dividing us, okay?
Hallelujah.
So, um, and what we do in town is town, okay? So the only thing I would raise is, you know, perhaps, is it even appropriate to have the military in? And I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, you know, what do we do in New Canaan? We run the town, okay? So, and we're in the US, which is great, we're in State of Connecticut, great, and we have our town flag, right? And so this way, you know, if you have kind of a just tight policy, then, you know, we're not pick, picking one person's interest over somebody else's interest in dividing people. So, um, I don't really have a problem with the military. I don't know when we ever do fly military flags.
Royal today, Veterans Day.
Right, but doesn't the US flag cover that? I, I, it's not, I, I, it's not a big deal. I'm, you just mentioned that Dariens might, might even carve that out. So I just, I would only just say, if you really wanna keep it just really tight to New Canaan, you know, uh, federal, state, local. And I agree with you in terms of the, the school flags, you know, because, you know, we're gonna fly in east one day, west another, and that can stay, stay there.
Well, there's locations for those.
And I, and I saw your, your considerations for half-mass that all sounded very, uh, reasonable to me.
But there, and one of the things about the military is I think we, as a, as a community, we do an excellent job recognizing the military. I mean, obviously we have the plaques downstairs. God's Acre is another spot that has a flagpole where we could say, hey, that's where, that's the appropriate spot for recognition of military, which, you know, uh, so keeping it tight is, that's what this, the draft and the idea behind the policy is. So I, you know, I, I could support that.
Yeah, I was just going even a little bit tighter. I mean, I, and I could completely understand why it makes sense to, let's, let's avoid, you know, having to have a one-off for people, I think.
I, I, yeah.
Is there, is there a clause in here, Diana, that, that says, you know, should there be an event where, you know, some sort of national event that, that we felt compelled to do something? I mean, is there still an option for an approval by?
I think that compelling thing, I mean, I don't know what would compel you beyond the American flag. So if there was a half-mass, like, if we, as a board of selectmen, if there was another nine eleven or something like that, that's when you would lower the flag. You would lower the flag to recognize. I don't know that you wanna get into.
No, you're right.
Other, I, I, I've already experienced it and I've experienced it at the schools. I literally want, don't wanna create.
You want it tight.
I want it tight, I do. I just want it tight. I want no confusion. I don't want anybody to feel like I don't support their cause when they ask me to fly a flag. It shouldn't be anything about my, any of our personal opinions about any issues. As, as I've said, it is not a, our flagpole should not be a speech.
Right.
Mechanism. It is a recognition that we are a member of this country and this state and this community, and that's what it should be.
Well, and to Amy's point, we're uniting people into, like, we're not divided.
Exactly.
I, I like that a lot, okay?
In terms of, um, half-mass, so if, uh, at the federal level.
Yeah.
Flags go half-mass, we follow that, right?
I got a nice app that tells you when to fly at fa-, that half, half-mass at the federal and federal level.
There's an app for everything, Matt.
There really is. If you're a patriot person, you, you do those kind of things.
Well, the governor, the governor decrees too, and the governor will send out notice.
Yes, yes, yeah, so for the state-level things too, yep.
So my only question is, uh, do we want, um, E and F, do we wanna tighten it even tighter and not have E and F in?
Well, you want D, E and F? I mean.
Well.
I, I feel like you're, I mean, it's like, if you take out just E and F, it's like, well, why are you not, I mean.
Right, just keep it to ABC.
ABC. I mean, I'm all right with that.
I just think it's.
I'm, I'm fine with a very tight, and you're right, the American flag also, um, is a tribute to our military and everything else, so we can, I'm, if, if you wanna keep it tighter.
Yeah, I would just stay tight.
Okay.
And I completely agree that it makes sense to do it ahead of time to avoid any of this.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna, we'll, we'll keep this policy excluding, uh, D, E and F and then everything else looks okay on this policy to everybody else?
It does.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, if I could get a motion to approve the draft po-, flag policy as presented excluding, um, under policy item one, uh, subcategories D, E and F. If I could get a motion to approve that new policy.
So moved.
Second, why is it draft? Is it still draft?
Well, after this, it won't be a draft.
Thank you.
It's, it's a draft until it's approved.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Made my life a lot easier. Okay. Audit committee appointment, so, um, we were very for it. As you all know, it has been, um, a lot of work finding capable, um, and appropriately trained candidates to fill our audit committee and we were still down one candidate. And, um, uh, Bill Bradley was brought to my attention by another audit committee member. And, um, you know, I think, I think we've all had the opportunity to interview, uh, Bill. And, um, I was just going to, um, you know, I, I got an email with some specific audit committee. So in addition to, um, Bill being a treasurer for Nielsen Company where he, you know, he works with cash management and banking, he also debt financing transactions. He, he also has experience with both defined benefit and defined contribution plans, which is a huge help to both our finance department and our HR department. Um, he's got risk management experience, financial planning and analysis and organization and process improvement, which also is a great help. But he's also worked with a lot of audit committees, so he's regularly participated in audit committee meetings, um, as a. as a treasurer, as the global treasurer, I should add that, he's global treasurer. He has regu, regular interaction with both internal and external audit firms in his, in his, in his job. And he provides input and review for ten Ks and ten Qs, so very familiar with financial statements. And, and he participates in the internal audit assessments. So he understands the importance of both the internal and the external audit. So I, um, I think he, you know, he has the right, I think the right disposition, demeanor, professional experience, he's been a member of this community for over thirty years. You know, I highly recommend Bill, um, to fill the seat being vacated, or, you know, the seat that's vacant.
I, I think, yet again, we are so lucky in this town to have the level of talent we have. And that people, um, can raise their hand and help out. He's certainly very familiar with financial reporting and, and uses of audits. I did talk to Bill, one thing that a lot of people coming into this don't necessarily have municipal audit experience. I don't care if they're CPA or whatever, they don't, but definitely is, you know, gonna dig down and make sure he understands that, that part of the business. Which, I mean, incredibly competent person, it would be a great addition. And, uh, also, I think we can't understate how important it is that people have the right disposition to work with people. And so I think it will be a very, uh, positive, uh, group moving forward and thank him for raising his hand.
Yes.
Yeah, I think he'd be a great fit. And, uh, it, one of the things that impressed me, not besides his resume and the fact that he's lived in town for thirty years, but his, he described himself as a, as a sort of a positive skeptic. And, uh, you know, going in, in, in position like this where you, you trust and verify at the same time. And, uh, he seemed like he said all the right things during, during the interview process. So, uh, I, I was very impressed with his resume and with his, his, when we interviewed him, so I'd, I'd support him as well.
Okay.
And does Audit get approved by town council, right?
So, and, yeah, so they will, they will take this up and I've asked, I've actually asked them to sort of reach out and, and meet him and, and take a look, so.
Well, I know it'd be nice to wrap this one up.
It really would, it really would. Okay, so if there are no further questions or, uh, comments, if I could get a motion to approve the appointment of Bill Bradley to serve, this is actually a one-year term, a one-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-four. So he's, that, just so everybody understands, he's filling the role, uh, the, the seat that he was filling. That term ended December first, twenty twenty-four, and then he will need to be reappointed for three years.
Got everybody on the set, am I correct?
Yeah, exactly, because it is a, it is a, um.
Rolling.
Rolling term, so, um, that would be great.
Good.
And then.
Second.
Amy? Alright, second, it's unanimous. Alright, and then in front of you, you have contracts under ten thousand dollars?
One of them's over ten thousand, one of them is twelve thousand five hundred and forty.
Where did we see this?
And it might be a typo.
Let me look.
B A S Spring, twenty-four cupcakes and woodworking.
That does not sound right.
We just approved that under the other, uh, under the three parking rack.
It's just over, that's the only reason. And, you know, if it is a three different events, um.
Oh, right.
Is it a different event?
So that's Elm Street event, so John brought that in front of you. So it went in for signature to Deanna.
Yep, it shouldn't be in this list, yeah.
So it should be off that list.
Because we just approved it in a, in a different.
So we can approve these except for that one.
Well, you don't, you don't.
Yeah, that's.
Alright, so we'll just take that one out, but we did approve it, we did approve it as a board earlier.
Yeah, very good catch.
Okay, and then, uh, legal fees. And I'm just moving the, uh, just so you know, it'll be noted when I sign it, but the, um, the fifteen rolling ridge is actually gonna go under Carrie. I don't know why that was under my name. Anything else?
No.
Still got, still got room to the end of year.
Yeah, okay. And then, so if I could get a motion to approve legal fees.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you. And then, uh, overpayment or refund of tax overpayments. Take a look at those. Okay, if I could get a motion to approve refunds or tax overpayments. It's unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?